Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the May 27th meeting of the Florissant City Council. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, would you please take the role?
Schmidt?
Here.
Hernandez, absent Lee, absent Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Shuldorff?
Here.
Henke?
Here.
Begano?
Yes.
Seeing the way of a quorum, I call this meeting order. Mr. Lee had sent us an email last week. He is vacationing in Florida. He will be with us at our next meeting. Excellent agenda. We have approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to our meeting minutes of May 12th? As a nun, Mr. Schmidt moves for approval, second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda, we have election of council officers. Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to nominate Councilman Joe Egan for Ward III for President.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Henke?
Yes, I would like to nominate Councilwoman Jackie Begano for the Vice President.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Before we have a five-minute break to reset the council, I would like to say a few things. I would like to thank the City Council, former Councilman John Gribb, Pat Stennett, the administration, Mayor Schneider, Karen Goodwin, Anita Moore, and Mr. Hessel for their patience, time, and effort over the past two years when I was presiding over this council. I consider this an honor and a privilege to have served this body and this mayor. Looking back, I attempted to take something from prior presidents, such as Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Lee, and then Councilman Schneider. As a citizen, I admired Mr. Schmidt for his diligence in handling the cross keys development, and Mr. Lee and Mr. Schneider for their diplomacy with the administration and then Mayor Lowry. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your gift that you gave me recently, the picture of this body. I am confident this will continue with Mr. Egan and this council, and look forward to working with both. Thank you.
Before we move that item, I just want to thank my fellow council persons for the honor and the privilege to serve as the President of the Council. I'm grateful and humbled. Next item on the agenda, special presentation regarding a legislative report by Tim Green. Mr. Green?
I'm going to go through this, and I do have a handout. At one point of the presentation, we'll go through the handout, just to give you an idea of what has transpired this past legislative year. You always hear, and it is growing more and more with term limits, but there were 1,258 House bills introduced, 53 concurrent resolutions, 51 House joint resolutions, and 22 rules. House joint resolutions, for your information, is what gets put to the vote of the people to either change statute or constitution. Some of the bills dealing with municipalities that I did follow, and one of the reasons I followed them is they could have impact with amendments further down the line, far Florissant, was I will briefly go through these, and you can see a lot of them stopped in the committee, but what you have to do is you have to follow these bills originally because when session gets to the last three weeks is when they start amending bills, and the ones that do not have positive impact can sneak on. But these are a lot of the bills that were being heard, dealing with a lot of different issues with local government. Representative Guernsey sometimes tried to change local government bond issuances. One of the things he tried doing was changing how we do design-build. And a lot of these individuals now with term limits, after one term, they're introducing bills at times not sure what the ramifications of these bills are. But as you can see, these different bills, Gatchenberger dealing with water supply districts, Representative Duggar dealing with changing of laws of political subdivisions prohibiting state agencies, or a member from knowingly aiding an agency in the United States Armed Forces, some of them get a little extreme. But I'm going to kind of page through these, just letting you know a lot of these bills, how they're introduced, and at times they do not go too far. One of the ones we had, that I was contacted early on by the mayor in the municipal league, requires cities or political subdivisions which intend to expand solid waste collection services into certain areas to put the intent to a vote of the people what this was. It was an elected official whose municipality, some of her constituents had problems with, so she was trying to change state law that would have a negative impact on allowing councils to make decisions for collection services or trash hauling. And if I'm running through these, let me know, but I'm just trying to show you the amount of bills dealing with local government that you have to follow each and every day. Eminent domain is always an issue. Once again, sewer districts besides trash districts. Representative Koenig on House Bill 2218, so that you know, he is the chairman of the committee that deals with the sales tax redistribution that further my presentation, if that issue was to pass, could have a negative impact to the city of Florissant of over $700,000. Once again, you have like Representative Summer, they're always trying to add two-year municipal court charges for certain issues that are preferable to certain individuals. The number of committees are 58, 19 statutory committees, and 17 interim committees. Of that 1,258 bills that were introduced, 99 House bills were passed. Of that 52 House joint resolutions that will go to the vote of the people, four of them These are selected municipal government bills that passed and moved through the House. And once again, I'm flying through these, and you're just briefly looking at them, but it's all in my presentation I've provided to you in written form, but it's once again trying to show you all the bills you're following, going to hearings on, and testifying on. Now, in the Senate bill, 511 Senate bills, so if you think about the number of bills introduced, over 1,700 bills were introduced by 197 individuals. Of the Senate bills, 85 of those Senate bills passed. So you had a total of 184 bills out of over 1,700 bills that were introduced that passed. These are certain bills in the Senate that were brought forth, create certain state and local sales and use tax exemptions for data storage centers, and allows municipalities to enter in that just received a hearing. One of the bills that was moving was Senate Bill 693. Senator Parson from Polk County brought that up, dealing with the ability of local municipal governments in requiring of whether or not they have fire sprinklers required in homes. Senator Walsh brought before bringing responsible bidders. Senator Emery from southeast or southwest Missouri had several bills dealing with personal property rights. Once again, I'm paging through these quickly. As you can see, Senator Lamping's two bills was taking away a little bit of the state sales tax and putting it into the state road fund. There's 18 standing committees, 20 statutory committees, three interim committees, and one special committee. That one special committee is the one we dealt with last year that deals with local governments in the sales tax distribution issue. Okay, I've given you a history of what happened in the legislature. Now for some more specific things, what went on that affects the city of Florissant. The red light cameras, after several court decisions, automated traffic systems and their CEO in the St. Louis metropolitan area, Jason Norton, who did a presentation to you last year, attempted to try to get the ability for the red light cameras in fractions without points through the legislature. Several of my reports I sent to you, and that the mayor also followed up sending to you, stated assisting him on getting it on all these different bills these past year. Actually, House Bill 1557 did pass the Missouri House. I worked with Mr. Norton in the committee and on the House floor. We were able to get it out of the Senate Transportation Committee, but with a week left, there were several senators that have a problem with the premise of red light cameras and filibustered that. That was the senator from Buchanan and the senator from Franklin. So in the last week of session with the filibuster going on, that issue was laid over. Also, one of the things the municipal governments were asking me to follow was the proposal of a constitutional amendment increasing a one-cent statewide sales tax that was truly agreed and finally passed to a 75-cent sales, 75, three-quarters cent sales tax increase. That will be on the August ballot to go to the vote of the people. One of the things that I was contacted about, not just by the mayor, but by one of the council members, is you have an ordinance that disallows pit bulls because of a previous incident. Representative Hicks and Senator Nieves were trying to get that through, to take away that right from municipal government. I was able to get it delayed in the House and then worked with several senators that agreed to filibuster the issue. But as you can see, we were able to stop it with several of the municipal lobbyists, but they tried to put it on the last week of session, 773, 852, 672, and 618, none of which passed. So municipal governments still contain that right. Representative Berry, there's always the issue dealing with the amount of revenue generated from traffic violations. We dealt with that issue last year somewhat, and the issue was brought this year to 30%. That issue did not get out of committee. Representative English pushed for authorizing the city of Florissant to charge reasonable fees to pay for costs associated with the maintenance of rideaways. I've reported in that. That just was able to get a hearing in committee. One of the things that I was contacted by the mayor and the St. Louis County Municipal League, Tim Fischacher, to assist in helping defeat, is we have a 9/11 call center that St. Louis County recently built. In the St. Louis metropolitan area, we fund a lot of our services, and when you get to rural Missouri, we subsidize a lot of those services. If you look at the state's budgeting, the St. Louis metropolitan region puts in, if you take all the surrounding counties, about 44% of the revenues, they get about 28% of those revenues back. What has happened is for years, and it's gone to the ballot two times, to create a statewide sales tax for 9/11 call centers throughout the state of Missouri. Each county wants their own call center, and there is no efficient structure that the 911 call center organization has. So they failed at the ballot box twice. St. Louis County took the initiative, the voters agreed, and passed it to tax themselves. And what was happening is Representative Lowry, a rural legislator, wanted to create a taxing on the purchases of phones to help subsidize the 9/11 call centers in rural Missouri. And working with several of the other municipal lobbyists, we worked with senators to kill that because St. Louis counties paying their fair share, why should the citizens also subsidize the rest of the state? Representative English proposed a bill allowing the city of Florissant to impose an additional court cost up to $10. After conferring with the mayor to give this council that opportunity, Senator Walsh was successful in placing it on as an amendment the last week of session on Senate Bill 621. So that will be a tool in your toolbox once the governor signs the bill. This is probably the biggest issue that always comes up, and it will continue to keep coming up. And for the newer council members, just to give you a quick history lesson, in 1993 there was a bill passed, House Bill 618, and what that did was redistribute sales tax dollars in St. Louis County. It's 20 years later, and the city of Chesterfield has been trying, with the city of Fenton, and Mayor Schneider has been active in the St. Louis County Municipal League on this issue, and I have attended a lot of the hearings, but they have been trying to repeal that because Chesterfield, with their new developments and their new retail outlet malls, want to keep all of that money. Now, if you go to the third page in your packet, I gave you a printout that's this large. Okay, Representatives, House Bill 234 by Representative Leir shows you the effects, if that piece of legislation was to pass, the negative impact it would have on your city. And the negative impact, if that bill was to pass, and it did not, would be $768,000. So that's how vital that piece of legislation that was passed in 1993 is to the city of Florissant. And you can see what all the other municipal governments would have a positive effect, and mostly a lot of the ones in North St. Louis County would have a negative effect. So basically, I've also included, just because the mayor of Chesterfield, it's the biggest pusher, is while I was working in lobbying this, and just to give you a history lesson, when I was a state representative, I was the sponsor of this bill in 1993, is on May 5th, there was a Post Dispatch article, and the issue dealt with getting St. Louis County to assist in the financing of a soccer park in Chesterfield. And I've highlighted that on the first page, but if you go to the third page, there's an individual, and his name is John Hammond in that article this past May 5th, who is the chairman of the Board of Frontenac Bank and the director of Progress 64 Nonprofit Group Promoting West County Development. And the proponents of the Chesterfield site say the county has nothing to lose from financial standpoint because Chesterfield funnels its sales tax receipts into a shared revenue pool. So they are promoting receiving funding from St. Louis County. In the last line I have highlighted, whatever is earned here goes to the rest of the county, so what's the big deal? So that is those individuals promoting. The next day in the Post Dispatch, on May 6th, you can see the mayor of Chesterfield wanting to secede from St. Louis County, the city of Chesterfield moved to Chesterfield. So I find it kind of hypocritical that when we're trying to promote something with St. Louis County taxpayers' dollars, the development people are for it, but then the next day, the mayor does not want to be able to assist the entire county in the purchasing. The last handout I have for you is a Post Dispatch editorial in today's Post. And basically, it stopped the sales tax shuffle. And if you remember working with Senator Walsh last year, when we were dealing with this St. Louis County Sales Tax Redistribution Governments Joint Committee, one of the issues she pushed to be part of that, besides the sales tax redistribution formula, was TIF reform. And one of the things you have to do in the region is have strong TIF reform so that truly blighted areas can use the tool of tax increment financing and not the more affluent area. That way, you can bring development in the truly blighted areas. So I wanted to share those handouts with you as I was going through this presentation. I think it was the third week in April where Representative Deal, who will be the next Speaker of the House, who is from the Manchester area, was pushing some type of compromise. His compromise still affected the city of Florissant by over $500,000 a year. I worked with St. Louis County Executive Charlie Dooley's lobbyist, and we were able to stop that push. But during that testimony, you could see a lot of the rural elected officials are following the lead of the future speaker. So once again, we're going to have to continue to monitor this and work our senators of making sure that this reform, our bill that wants to repeal the sales tax redistribution philosophy or statute in the state, which would have major detrimental impact, has to be continued to be monitored. Once again, the mayor contacted me. One of the funds that the city of Florissant receives is through the funding of the Missouri Arts Council. The Missouri Citizens for the Arts was pushing for the renewal of their arts and entertainer's tax, which brings money into the state in which the city of Florissant, through grants, receives. Also, we were able to bypass the friction between the solid waste districts in rural Missouri to make sure that the grants for the solid waste grants stayed in the budget as well this year. These are a few dates when the governor must approve or veto bills by, if a bill gets signed into law, when it goes into effect, and if it is vetoed, when they take it up. There's always the question, as you can see with term limits, more and more local political subdivisions are hiring consultants to watch out because so many laws change daily, but as you can see, the list is going of cities because just with term limits, nobody has the institutional knowledge sometimes of what is transpiring. I hope I was brief enough, and I hope I didn't put anyone to sleep.
Any questions from the council? Thank you very much, Mr. Green.
Yes, Senator, how many, just for those that don't know, how many years did you spend in the House and in the Senate?
I was a state representative for 14 years. And a state senator for eight years.
A total of 22 years.
On the redistribution of the sales tax dollars, too, on that point, I was riding down the elevator, and one of my colleagues, one of the ones pushing for this, jokingly said, "Why'd you come back to do this?" I says, "To make sure you don't repeal everything I passed in my 22-year career." But they just don't want to listen to what negative impact some of these pieces of legislation will have, and you're seeing just the effects of term limits. And we got some good senators from the metropolitan area that work in a bipartisan effort, and they were successful in helping delay this. Even though it didn't get out of the House, it was with the knowledge that they weren't going to let it move in the Senate that they eventually gave up on the issue this year.
The threats that we are experiencing from the state legislature due in some part to the negative impact of term limits are more numerous and more onerous than they've been ever, and I value the ability to be able to contact Senator Green to monitor those things that I become aware of, and then even those that I don't become aware of, like that one bill with the pit bulls that kept trying to tack it on to other bills. There's no way that we could keep track of that kind of stuff from the mayor's office. And even our state representatives and senators, the ones that are in office are busy with their committees and all that kind of stuff, so we have the advantage of having someone with 22 years of experience in the legislature to sort of hover about and look out for our well-being, so we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is commendations. At the request of Chief Lowry, I moved, removed the presentation, accommodations from the agenda, seconded by Mr. Shuldorff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing from citizens. Next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time when citizens can speak on any topic they choose, except for those topics on the public hearing for this evening. Each speaker has up to three minutes to address the council. This is not a question and answer period. If you have a personal question you want answered, see myself or one of the other council people after the meeting. And we have no speaker cards, so we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is communications. City clerk, please read the communications.
Email dated May 20th, 2014, from Pamela Lee regarding the 2014 Beautiful Home Awards.
Public hearings. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. The first one we have is public hearing number 14-05-12.
Thank you. In accordance to Section 405.310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, May 12th, which was postponed to May 27th, at 7:00 p.m. on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to allow for a sign shop in B3 zoning district for the property located at 8215 North Lindbergh. Citizens will have an opportunity to hear. Anyone in specialty should contact the city clerk these five days before a public hearing. We call 8397600 or TD 8395142.
I believe our petitioner is present. Mr. Nash, if you could come forward, please. Thank you, sir. Any of you will be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Ron Nash. My business address is 8215 North Lindbergh Boulevard of Florissant.
All right, very good. Mr. Nash, if you just kind of tell us a little bit about your proposal, please?
Okay. I brought forth a business to the city of Florissant with a substantial amount of my retirement funds on February the 7th of this year, where I've been doing business since. My impact on the community is relatively light from the prospects of parking, sounds, and chemicals. To elaborate, Signorama employs two full-time and one part-time associates. I have an outside associate who is out of the shop most of the day. Typically, our hours are 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. 90% plus of Signorama's customers are other business owners. Because of the business surface model, it's expected that most of my customers will never enter into my shop. Therefore, my shop is expected to have a minimal impact on the parking of the plaza where I reside with my business. As far as sounds, today's signs are designed by computers and fabricated by computers. The computerized machines that we use to fabricate our signs and design them are both print and vinyl plastics is what we use within, to produce the signs. As such, most of these signs come to my shop even pre-cut. I do not want to cut I do not want to cut any materials in my shop. It's an economic incentive for me to not do that, as I can order material today, pre-cut to size, and have them in my shop the following day. Therefore, we're not going to be doing a lot of cutting. And the cutting that does occur by the computers and such is of approximate volume as you hear me speak today. As far as chemicals, we use Windex to clean our products. We do not use paints. We do not use solvents. We do not use any other caustic chemicals in the cleaning or fabricating processes. Also, because I can order materials today and have them today or tomorrow, I have very minimal storage needs of the base materials that we use to make our signs. Therefore, taking altogether the parking, the sounds, the chemicals, the solid materials, we have very minimal impact onto our local community here in Florissant. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nash. I've been into your business a couple occasions. It's very clean and neat and quiet, and I think it's a good fit for the city and for the ward. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like the opportunity to speak on this issue? Mr. Nash, if you could step aside one second.
John Engelmeyer, 1281 Graham Road. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but this is probably one of the best presentations I have seen in the many, many years of attending a council meeting. It was excellent. Are you interviewing for Shark Tank? That was great! I thought you did an outstanding job. I can't believe, I mean, that was fantastic! I wasn't going to speak, but I thought, boy, what a presentation! That was great! That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Engelmeyer, and thank you, Mr. Nash. Seeing no one else, Mr. Shildroff moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Kaputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor and council members.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Old Business. Next item on the agenda. First item under Old Business is second readings. I will move for a second reading of Bill Number 8991, seconded by Mr. Jones. Clerk, please read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for the second time.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to allow for a car leasing business in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 8115 North Lindbergh.
Mr. Schmidt moves for a third reading to place upon its passage, seconded by Mr. Kaputa. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for the third and final time.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to allow for a car leasing business in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 8115 North Lindbergh.
Before the final vote, would anyone like to speak on this issue at this time? Clerk, please poll the council.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez, Lee, Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Bill Number 8991 becomes ordinance 8042. Next item on the agenda is a substitute bill. Councilman Kaputa moves to accept a substitute of Bill Number 8993, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Councilman Kaputa again moves for the second reading of substitute 8993, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to allow for a 100-foot monopole telecommunication tower in an R2 zoning district for the property located at 15245 New Halls Ferry Road.
Mr. Kaputa moves for a third reading at this time. Before we have a final vote, would anyone like to comment on this bill?
Let's do the third reading first and then do that.
I'm sorry?
Do the third reading first.
Clerk, please do the third reading.
Motion and second for the third reading.
Okay. Mr. Kaputa will make the motion for the third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to allow for a 100-foot monopole telecommunication tower in an R2 zoning district for the property located at 125245 New Halls Ferry Road.
Now, before the final vote, would anyone like to comment on this issue? Clerk, please poll the council.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Bill Number 8993 becomes ordinance Number 8043. Bill Number 8995, Councilman Shildroff moves for a second reading of Bill Number 8995, seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance deleting Section 405.225 parking regulations and Section 405.230 off-street loading regulations in their entirety and replacing them with new sections.
Mr. Jones moves for a third reading to place upon its passage, seconded by Mr. Kaputa. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance deleting Section 405.225 parking regulations and Section 405.230 off-street loading regulations in their entirety and replacing them with new sections.
Before the final vote is taken, would anyone in the audience like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Bill Number 8995 becomes ordinance Number 8044. Bill Number 8998. Can we just do that? No, that's a new one. Mr. Schmidt moves for a second, moves for a second reading. Ms. Pagano seconds. All opposed? In favor? Opposed?
You were trying to trick him, weren't you?
I was.
See if they're listening to you. Ordinance repealing ordinance Number 7885 and designating CAP5 Advisors LLC as a preferred developer with respect to the New Halls Ferry and Parker Road redevelopment area.
Mr. Henke moves for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Ordinance repealing ordinance Number 7885 and designating CAP5 Advisors LLC as a preferred developer with respect to the New Halls Ferry and Parker Road redevelopment area.
Before the final vote is taken, would anyone in the audience like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Bill Number 8998 becomes ordinance Number 8045. Next item on the agenda is Bill Number 8999. Councilman Shildroff moves for a second reading of the Bill Number 8995, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
8999.
8999.
There you go.
Opposed?
Ordinance appropriating the sum of $900 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 0632 Office Supplies for the purchase of Office Supplies for the Golf Course.
Councilman Shildroff moves for a third reading of Bill Number 8999, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance appropriating the sum of $900 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 0632 Office Supplies for the purchase of Office Supplies for the Golf Course.
Before the final vote is taken on this issue, would anyone like to speak? Clerk, please poll the council.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Bill Number 8999 becomes ordinance 8046. Next item on the agenda is new business. The first item under new business is board appointments. Next item on the agenda is request. First item under request is out of Ward Number 4. Do you read that? Request to add tasting permit to existing liquor license for Huck's Food and Fuel for the property located at 3500 Patterson Road. Mr. Kaputa.
I will be against this request. Yes, I move to deny this request. Move to approve.
I will second that. All in favor? A roll call.
Schmidt?
No.
Jones?
No.
Egan?
No.
Kaputa?
No.
Shildroff?
No.
Henke?
No.
Pagano?
Request has been denied. Next item on the agenda is new business bills for first reading. Bill Number 8992.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to allow for a sign shop in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 8215 North Lindbergh.
Bill 9000.
Ordinance to establish a B5 planned commercial district. Ordinance to allow for a new retail sales building in a B5 zoning district for the property located at 14070 New Halls Ferry Road.
Bill 9001.
Ordinance to amend Title II, Chapter 245 Parks and Recreation of the Florissant City Code, Section 245180 Fees for Use to Adjust Non-Resident Fees for the Use of Pool Facilities.
Mr. Schmidt, or Mr. Shildroff moves for a second reading, approved by, or seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance to amend Title II, Chapter 245 Parks and Recreation of the Florissant City Code, Section 245180 Fees for Use to Adjust Non-Resident Fees for the Use of Pool Facilities.
Mr. Shildroff moves for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Do a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Okay. Schmidt?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Ordinance to amend Title II, Chapter 245 Parks and Recreation of the Florissant City Code, Section 245180 Fees for Use to Adjust Non-Resident Fees for Use of Pool Facilities.
Prior to the third and final vote being read, does anyone in the audience have anything to discuss on this issue? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Bill 9001 becomes ordinance Number 8047. Next item on the agenda is council announcements. Ms. Pagano?
Thank you. I would like to ask the residents again for your participation in the Beautiful Home Awards. That is, the due date is the 30th of this month to get those into Toni Camerier. And you can take a picture and email those to her and nominate the home of your choice and your ward to her. And also, I'm very happy to say that we are having the Florissant City Council BBQ for wards 5, 7, 8, and 9 on June 10th. This is the second annual. It would be held at Donegan Park, Pavilion 1, between 6 and 8 on that Tuesday evening. We ask that you bring a lawn chair. It was a full house last year, and we will have snow cones again, and I know the mayor and the council will be there, and we look forward to everyone attending.
Mr. Kaputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to thanks the VFW for yesterday's memorial that we had at Coke Park at the Vietnam Memorial. It was a very nice ceremony, and I would like to thank the mayor. He had a very good, very good presentation, and a lot of people were there, and I thank everybody that showed up. Thank you.
Mr. Henke.
Yes, good evening. I want to thank all the letter carriers of the city of Florissant, and more importantly, I guess, all the residents of the city of Florissant, for the letter carriers' food drive, their participation, which was May the 10th. I was informed that it was the largest food drive in our food drive history here in Florissant. They collected approximately 47,700 pounds of food, and all of that goes to the team food pantry, which is down at the bottom of St. Catherine here, so it all stays here in Florissant. So I want to thank everyone for that. Also, relatively new in the position, and I'm trying to build a little bit of a database of residents, participation, little volunteers. So if you can hear me and would either call me at my home number, 831-1180, or more probably easier, if you would email me at ward6@florissentmo.com. I need to contact information, name, address, phone number, obviously, the email. I'm trying to set up a little communications going out with the stuff that I'm getting, forwarding out to different people in the ward. One thing that I wanted to do is have like a Ward 6 volunteer, maybe a little bit stronger of a word, but I see a lot of people out walking, their dogs are just out walking, and I would like to start a volunteer where people, if they're out walking, they'll pick up that old newspaper that's laying down there, that beer can, that soda bottle, or whatever's there. And I had made up some Ward 6 volunteer bags. So call me or email me, and I'll make sure you get one of these, and it will be part of the contact list. And just, I want the people in Ward 6 to know their neighbors, know the neighborhood, and I want to see these green bags out there where everybody will know who their neighbors are out. Thanks.
Mr. Shildroff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to also echo Mr. Kaputa's thoughts, thanking the VFW for the celebration yesterday of Memorial Day at Coke Park, and I also attended one at the Veterans Home of Belafonte Neighbors, and it was a very good experience. I would like to congratulate former chief and mayor Bob Lowery on the recent renaming of the police department in his honor. I would like to thank the city staff, and specifically, outside the city staff, Mr. Kim Tuji, for serving as emcee to make this event a historic moment for our city. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Sean Weller, a resident of Ward 5, for winning the Thomas F. Eagleton Award at the recent Thomas Jefferson Days event. It was quite an honor. Congratulations, Mr. Weller.
I would like to thank Mr. Shildroff for the last two years that he served as the council president, and the guidance and the wisdom he's already given me in this chair. And again, I promise to uphold the traditions that he started in a positive manner. On June 28th, there will be a Walk for ALS. Mr. Tony Hastings, who is one of our residents over on Manrisa, has suffered with ALS for many, many years, and he is sponsoring a team. If you want to join Tony's team, give me a call at 395-6838, and I will put you in touch with Mr. Hastings. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd just like to give a shout-out to the local two, the Ward 2 people out there. It's been jumping in, helping getting these carports cleaned up. There's a place for stuff in the carport, I totally understand, but then there's other things that need to go in the house and out in the sheds. And I've been working very diligently on these streets to make sure everybody is on the same page when it comes to the carports. Thanks.
Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very pleased and grateful to live in such a great faith-based patriotic community, and very pleased with the turnout that we had for the Memorial Day Reflections yesterday at the Vietnam Memorial at Coke Park. I was pleased with the turnout. We think next year, we're going to, I'm going to suggest that we have the event at 11:30. We almost had like two events. but we had a group that thought it was at noon and a group that thought it was at 11:00. And symbolically, on Memorial Day, we have the flag at the half-staff, and that has symbolism. And then we raised the flag, the living raised the flag to pledge to those who have passed on before us that we're going to carry on their work at noon. So there's a significance in raising the flag back up to full staff at noon, and hopefully that'll be part of our celebration, our ceremony next year. The St. Louis County Municipal League started a couple years ago to have an award ceremony instead of just an installation ceremony when they install the new officers every year, and it was very, very well received. And this is like the third year that they're doing it. We actually, our former police chief, Bill Carabas, received the very first immunity award for law enforcement excellence. And I'm pleased to announce that this year, the city of Florissant is going to receive another law enforcement-related, but it's also a park-related award, because they're giving us an award for the innovation of hiring part-time police officers who are retired, yet they're still very healthy, and they still want to be police officers, but they want to kind of dial it back just a little bit. And we're very fortunate to have Officer Lively and Officer Tito in our police force that they are at our parks and our recreation facilities. And that innovation for having park police in that way was recognized by the municipal league, and we're getting an immunity award for that on Thursday this week. And so I know that many of the council members are going to join me in that, and we're very happy to be recipients of that award. Also, the deadline for the Beautiful Home Awards is noon on Friday, this Friday, May 30th. So we're looking, we're still looking for nominations, so if there's a home in your neighborhood that people are taking extra good care of, and you're very proud of that particular home in your neighborhood, please call your council member or my office or community development director Carol Almera and submit that address for us to look at so that we can select nine homes from each ward, and then there's one at large, which will be the mayor's choice. So get those nominations in by noon on Friday. And we have Paul Maganelli here. Would you stand, Paul? Paul is the chairman of the, one of the chairman of the Florissant Food Truck Nights. It's one of the innovations for the Knights of Columbus. They are one of the key stakeholders, key stakeholder groups in our community. They're always sponsoring or hosting something that's to benefit other people in the community. And one of the organizations that's going to benefit from this food truck night is going to be TEAM, the assistant, let's see, TEAM stands for the emergency assistance ministry. And it's the food pantry that is a food pantry for so many different denominations in our community. And instead of each church having their own food pantry, they kind of get together. We got volunteers from St. Rose, from St. Ferdinand, from St. Mark's, and from all the different, from Lutheran Church, the Etonement, all different denominations are represented at TEAM. So they're going to, I've suggested that they have a collection barrel at each entrance to the food truck night at the Knights Grounds, and that they're also going to accept, if you forget your food, you know, maybe you can give them a dollar or two or five or whatever, because they also need money. The need is great, and so we're hoping to collect some food and maybe some money for TEAM at the food truck night. It was very well-attended last time. I expect the next three. This one is on June 12th at five, from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Knights Grounds. So I'm sure that's going to be very well-attended. Get there early if you don't want to stand in a long line. And then the Fiesta in Florissant is going to be on June 22nd from 11:00 to 9:00 PM, and on June, actually, June 20th, Saturday, June 21st from 10:00 to 10:00, and Sunday, June 22nd from 11:00 to 9:00. On June 22nd, I know there are also, all the Catholic parishes in Florissant are having a Corpus Christi procession from Sacred Heart to the St. Ferdinand Shrine, and we'll get more details on that later. On June 25th and 26th, we're going to celebrate 75 years as a place called Florissant. We're going to have a special historical reflection magazine coming out in the next week or so. It's going to be full of everything that's happened in the last 75 years, and I don't want to give away any secrets, but it's really going to, I think it's a tremendously interesting publication. It's going to be, we're going to celebrate the 75 years with sort of a birthday party at the Wednesday Night Out, which is going to be in front of the old, the two old city halls. One of them now is used as a dining center. That was the original city hall, and then Buckholz Mortuary was a city hall at one time. It was also a police headquarters at one time. But that's the, in front of there is where we're going to have the Wednesday Night Out on June 25th, and we'll have a band, and we're going to celebrate that. And then on June 26th, which is the actual date that the ordinance was passed to change the name from St. Ferdinand to Florissant, we're going to have two town hall meetings at the theater so we can start discussing the next 75 years, and that's going to be at 2:00 PM as the matinee one, and then in the evening will be at 7:00 PM. Then lastly, I've been asked to announce that on, that the veterans, Vietnam Veterans of America are raising money by selling tickets to a baseball game on August 2nd, and I'm sure you can get more information by calling VFW where the Vietnam Veterans Meet, and I don't have a phone, or you can contact 395-2788 for ticket information from Bill Keaper. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of the city council will be June 9th, 2014, June 9th, 2014. Mr. Jones moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Schmitz. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?